That's for the both of us, okay, sorry. Tuesday, excuse me, Wednesday, August 10th, 2022, the time is now approaching 9:03 a.m. This is our monthly meeting for the elected officials. We do have a couple out that I believe are down in Boise for attending conferences and attending our commissioners Duncan, Brooks, and Filios. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
No.
I hear none. So moving right on, first item of discussion is fleet management. Go ahead, Leslie.
I think it's been working out pretty well, at least for me, and so I just wanted to have a brief discussion about, you know, making sure that we continue bringing everything to fleet management and potentially even adding boats because not just KCSO Parks and Waterways, but Assessor has boats as well. And I think it would just streamline the process a little bit and then it would be a little less hassle on the commissioners when it's time for budget. So.
Okay.
To get people's thoughts. They are working on updating the policy this month or next month. And I would also, I think in the beginning, they weren't having restricted fund vehicles go through there, but I think that's really important because just because we have restricted funds doesn't mean people can just buy whatever they want. I think it still needs to go through the process about, you know, does it fit policy and where can it be handed down? And I think, you know, with this new system and with KCSO being able to hand down their triple down cars, I think is good. So as long as that, we're following that path, I've been pretty pleased with it this year.
Okay.
So.
Anybody want to add anything to that? Any one of our EOs?
Okay.
Surrogates, okay. Cootney Electric Cooperative Furniture, as everybody knows, obviously we purchased the formerly Cootney Electric building, which I think we will be occupying would be roughly the fall of 23.
December of 23.
December of 23.
Yeah.
And so Leslie has had discussions, I believe, with the CEO, with Mr. Elliott, and having to do with the purchase of furniture because they do have a lot of good furniture. The building is like 56,000 square feet, so there's quite a bit of furniture in there. So I'll just turn it over to you. Go right ahead.
They've offered it to us at about $150,000 for that 92-person essentially office building. And so Greg and I are going to go look at the furniture. I've seen it a couple times, but I didn't know if any other elected official who potentially may have people out there wanted to join us to look at the furniture and give us any ideas. $150,000, I don't think is a lot of money for all that furniture, but I don't want to make the decision on my own. So it would be nice to have a couple other EOs who may have personnel out there eventually to come with and view the furniture. We do have to make a decision by next month because otherwise they're offering it via auction. So please let me know. You can let me know now or via email and we'll schedule. It's usually a Friday morning. That works out best. And that's all I have on that.
Bill, anything? I suspect it would cost us substantially more to furnish that.
Yeah, sorry. That office furniture is incredibly expensive and usually incredibly cheap when it's resold.
Yeah. And it'll be about five years old. I think the majority of it, maybe 50% to 75%, will be five years old. Some of it may be older by the time we get in there in December of 23.
That's not bad.
Well, and given supply chain shortages, which is certainly not limited to chips, other items as well, who knows how long it might take us to furnish it when we occupy it. So I think it makes sense, but that's my opinion. Do you want to move on from there or?
Yeah, I mean, if nobody's gonna jump in. Okay.
Commissioner, having taken a tour with our staff, that equipment is in great repair and everything else. I would be foolish, honestly, to give my opinion not to say we shouldn't jump on that.
Okay. All right. Sounds good.
There were several of us, I think. Bayla, you're.
I concur.
Oh, you concur, okay.
Yeah, and you do want to come see it or you're just?
I do want to come see it. I was making a note at the time. What, did you give a date on when?
Nope, do not. But I'm just, I'll let you.
Please include me.
In the thing. And you've already seen it, Jennifer, so you go, okay.
Good quality.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so I'll do that.
So arrange it for Bayla, okay.
Yeah.
PMR On-Site Medical Clinic, site visit for September. Go right ahead, Leslie.
Yes. So they do have a clinic in Boise and IAC is in Boise the last week of September. So I was just going to ask anybody if they're going to go to IAC and if they're going to, if they'd like to attend an onsite visit with me to this clinic that we are considering through HR.
I'd be, I, Gemini, I think, are going to go, but I think Steve was willing to go too.
Okay.
So you'll be at IAC?
That's the plan so far.
Is this for workplace injury?
It's for everything.
It's for everything. Oh, it, you want to go into it?
Sure. So we've had a presentation through HR and you can go back and watch the HR meeting. It's pretty interesting. It's quite an expensive capital outlay, but essentially we would have a clinic dedicated to Cootney County, our organization. And then if anybody, it's essentially, it's a primary care physician for all of the employees and their spouses and dependents. So, yeah, it's pretty interesting. I mean, it's not without, there's a lot of research and work to be done, so I don't want to get everybody's hopes up. But they have one in Boise, and so I wanted to go visit that and find out who's going to IAC and who wanted to join the visit as well.
And it can be either fixed or mobile.
Correct, yeah.
So by mobile, you know, like a van-type setup that's virtually fully equipped to be able to handle diagnoses and some level of prescription, or if the participation rate is high enough, they might just have a fixed location here in town?
Is this something that would replace the primary healthcare? Is that, is that, no?
It's an addition. It's an additional service to us.
So for employees that don't have a primary physician, this works out well. For those who do, and maybe you can't get in time because they are obviously, you know, we've got a shortage of physicians, this is a good alternative.
Certainly also like to consider with HR, our employee injury, we're, we'd like to consider maybe using an alternative provider instead of Coopie Health all the time because it appears to be much more expensive and the wait times are much more.
Longer.
Much more exhaustive, so.
Yeah, I mean, definitely have a conversation with HR and we'll get with Alliant and see what's available. Yeah.
And I know Alliant has often recommended second opinions, haven't they?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, but I mean, I think he's just talking about, they have an issue right now today. They gotta get somebody in soon, sooner than later. So, okay. Any other questions or anything? So I'll make sure everybody's on that email list for that.
Overtime policy for fiscal '23. Go right ahead.
Yes. Earlier this year, we had made some changes temporarily to expire on September 30th. I think in conversations with HR, and I would probably like to continue it, potentially making it a permanent change. But what we need to do is find out the fiscal impact, which is going to take a while. So it's a little bit of a deep dive. So that's kind of where I'm at. I wanted to anybody's thoughts, if they thought the policy was working well, if they wanted to go back to the old policy, you know, just anything that anybody had to add.
So continue on with the policy we implemented until the end of this year?
Yeah, so that's, it's due to expire the 30th and go back to our original policy. But I'm looking at making it a permanent policy as long as we can get the financial information. I just haven't seen anything outrageous at this point that it's hurting our budget to an extent that we wouldn't continue it.
For everyone's benefit, you want to just briefly describe the old and the new?
So the old was based on 86 hours for law enforcement, and we changed it to 80 hours. And I think we actually even went to a court, Sylvia can probably better explain.
Oh, okay, cool. Yeah, go ahead, Sylvia.
Oh, good, yeah. And then it had to do with holidays and court time.
For the holiday consideration, holidays now are considered in the calculation for overtime as actual hours worked. So if you had a holiday on Monday and you worked 38 hours in the week, that holiday would be considered part of the calculation. So then you would get overtime pay.
Okay.
And then pre-approved vacation was part of that. And what that mean, what we mean by that is if a staff member was required to report to work on a scheduled vacation that is non-FMLA, the leave would be observed, vacation leave time would be observed as actual hours worked for calculating overtime. And then we had court time pay. And the details around that is if an employee is required to report for work-related court appearance on an employee's scheduled day off, the employee will be paid or receive compensatory time off for the hours worked for court. This time will be calculated at time and one half, regardless of the number of hours worked in the work week or pay period. So those were the three changes that were made March 23rd. And as Leslie mentioned, would remain in effect through September 30th unless we do go with that as our regular policy.
And then my also, I don't know when we're going to be able to have the calculation, so I'm willing to extend it a month at a time until we get those calculations.
You get the numbers, yeah, that makes sense, I think.
I appreciate that consideration, we do. To remain competitive with other agencies, I think it's imperative that we go down that road. So appreciate that consideration.
Okay. So we'll have an analysis done?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, final item, hiring practices per policy.
Nope, mid-year changes.
Oh, mid-year changes, forgive me, I skipped one. Go ahead. Mid-year pay changes for fiscal year '23. Go ahead.
Kind of speaking with the auditor's office and HR, this kind of really ties into actually number six as well. We're not going to have a lot of money for mid-year pay changes. And so we really need to get back into the habit of dealing with what we have until budget season, where we can address things for the next fiscal year. So unfortunately, we have three of our elected officials not here with us, but they can obviously watch this. It's just gotten out of hand. I do want to balance that with the fact that obviously we have labor shortages and stuff that we're dealing with. But in general, it's just, people are just bringing absolutely everything before us, and it's really hurting the budget and the budget process. So I want to make sure that all the elected officials are very aware and cognizant, including the Board of Commissioners, because we have 14 department heads, that we're really trying to wait on mid-year pay changes, if at all possible.
So when we talk about mid-year pay raises, we've got issues like compression, parity, which people, I think logically assume are an exception.
So, right, but that goes back to hiring policy and we can just go ahead and handle this too. I think some people have gotten in the habit of hiring people at a wage where it is creating parity. And so if they can negotiate with the person and hire them at a level that they're supposed to be at instead of hiring them above the level. And so I want to, and I think Sylvia, we can work on a communication to make sure that people are understanding, okay, to get to that step five, they have to have the relevant experience. They have to fit within that parameter. I know that a lot of times if they don't have identical experience, the clerk's office especially hires them at a lower step. And so I think that's important. Doesn't really apply to law enforcement a lot because you guys have your, you know, it's a different issue, but I'm talking about the other five, four, 500, 600 general pay plan employees. So I want to make that kind of, we're going to have less mid-year pay changes if our hiring practices go back to where I think it should be. If they don't have identical experience, if they're not coming from another municipality, that we hire them at a more appropriate level so it doesn't create parity. We already have, you know, issues with people, we're trying to fix an issue every single year. And so that's, we are compounding the issues that need to be fixed by not hiring at the right step and creating these parity issues. So.
And with the proposed increases for this year, which is dramatic, if we approve them at the end of August, it should make it easier to implement a policy of avoiding those mid-year increases.
Yes.
Because with everybody getting the increases they're getting, hiring people at levels that doesn't create a parity or compression issue should be easier for the most part. How many openings do we currently have, Sylvia? Where are we at?
Randy and I were just talking about it. She checked yesterday. We thought we had 130. I, we may have entered some new employees that we brought on this week, and I showed 125. So we did hire.
About 125?
Yeah.
But it would make it easier for people who do the hiring later, instead of coming before the Board of Commissioners and being told no, because I fully intend to be very hardcore on that. It doesn't mean anything if we, if we don't hold ourselves to it.
Yeah, that's true.
So, so don't do something that causes a lot of work for yourself, a lot of disappointment for your employees. Check, check, check before you ask to come before the board and make a pitch.
Right. And we do have some ones in, I don't know if you want to call them grandfathered in, but we're dealing with them this week and then in two weeks. And then hopefully by the time the pay raises come at the end of September, then we just go back to a policy. Well, that was the other thing too, the hiring practices policy. Sylvia and I were going to work on, condensing's the wrong word, tightening it up, being a little bit more specific, I think.
Right, right. Because right now, the way the policy works, it allows you to hire up to 97% of market. And step one is where you meet the minimum qualifications for the job. Step two is up to one year of experience. So that's bringing an individual to 85% of market. Step three is 89% of market with two to three years of experience. Step four is 93% of market with four years of experience. And step five is 97% of market with five years or more of the experience, relevant experience. And in the past, the board has allowed some departments to hire like at 89% because our starting salaries were so low. And I think the ultimate goal is to, if they don't have the experience, relevant, however we design the policy updates, then they need to come in at that step, not under a higher step unless the board approves that.
And I would suggest the board not approve that. I suggest that we go back to policy and really try to address, you know, keep within policy.
And with the economy showing some signs of slowing, it might become a little easier. So let's see what happens. Are we done with that item, with items five and six?
I, I think so. I just wanted everybody to know that that's what was in the works because it's gotten out of hand and just can't afford it anymore. I mean, literally, we've already committed to 2% tax increase next year with just what we're approving for FY '23. For FY '24, it's a 2% to maintain this. So it's getting very, very tight and concerning. And I, I don't believe our labor shortage is going to be such that we'll have to make hard decisions. But I don't want to continually kick the can again in a different manner this time. So that's all I got.
Anyone else? Okay, then, folks, public comment. Come right up. So we can pick you up on the mic.
I'll go first since I tend to be the most long-winded. Can I come right over here?
Yeah, yeah, go right ahead. And make sure the little green button, the light is on, and that'll pick you up.
Good morning. My name is Linda Plitz. I'm sorry.
You're fine.
Okay. I think it's safe to say that most, all of us in this room, perhaps with a few exceptions, consider Jesus Christ our Lord and Savior, and God's word is the foundation for living our lives. Hence, I'd like to share Isaiah 5:20 with you, which says, "Woe to those who call evil good and good evil, who put darkness for light and light for darkness, who put bitter for sweet and sweet for bitter." We all know that the Pride in the Park event and the Drag Queen show was an abomination before God and our community, and especially to the children of our community. However, because of political correctness, far too many are fearful and calling out shameful acts as shameful acts. I'm asking for the prosecuting attorney of Cootney County to take a look at the events that occurred and utilize the law to its full extent for the intent and purpose of protecting Cootney County. On June 11th, the North Idaho Pride Alliance sponsored the Drag Queen show on the band stage at the Coeur d'Alene City Park and event-targeting families. Their posters and media blitzes promoted a family-friendly event, which included child-friendly activities, food vendors, a balloon-making clown, and local businesses. During the course of the 54-minute Drag Queen performance, numerous Idaho statute violations occurred in the presence of a minimum of 70 minors under the age of 18. The Constitution of the State of Idaho calls for the promotion of temperance and morality, stating, "The first concern of all good government is the virtue and sobriety of the people and the purity of the home." Virtue is defined as conformity to a standard of right, a particular moral excellence. Sobriety is defined as earnestly thoughtful character or demeanor. Purity is free from what weakens or pollutes, free from moral guilt or fault. Morality is the conformity to ideals of right human conduct and virtue. As a result, the Crimes and Punishments Chapter 15 for Children and Vulnerable Adults was enacted to ensure the protection of children and the community as a whole. Various sections under Title 18 define injury to children as any person who willfully causes mental suffering or willfully causes or permits a child to be placed in such situations that is personal, in which its personal or health is endangered. Subjecting children to perverted sexual images is dangerous and harmful. Sexual abuse of a child under the age of 16 is a felony for any person with the intent to gratify the lust, passions, or sexual desire of an actor, minor child, or third party, to induce, cause, or permit a minor child to witness an act of sexual conduct. Sexual conduct means human masturbation or any touching of the genitals or pubic areas in an act of apparent sexual stimulation or gratification. Erotic, I'm sorry, sexual exploitation of a child talks about erotic fondling, meaning touching a person's clothed or unclothed genitals or pubic area or buttocks. Erotic nudity means the display of human male or female genitals or pubic area for the purpose of real or simulated overt sexual gratification or stimulation of one or more of the persons involved. Explicit sexual conduct means erotic fondling, erotic nudity, masturbation, which means a touching, rubbing, or otherwise simulating the person's own clothes.
I'll give you another minute. I think it's gotten graphic enough. I think we get the message.
Okay, but this is what was occurring in public. And that's the whole thing, is if it's too graphic for this meeting, then it's too graphic to be done in a public park in front of children, in a city park. Obscene materials is to, the purpose of the policy is to restrain the distribution, promotion, or dissemination of obscene material or material harmful to minors, or the performance of obscene performances that is harmful to minors. It is found that such materials and performances are a contributing factor to crime, to juvenile crime, and also a basic factor in impairing the ethical and moral development of our youth. That is in our constitution. So what are we going to do about this? Are we going to ignore it, condone it, promote it? North Idaho Pride Alliance is already planning for next year's event. Don't be surprised when they want a parade permit. Will we cower because we don't want to be labeled as homophobic or transphobic? Sandpoint took their event. They saw what happened down here. They took their event to a private location. We cannot allow our county or our city to be known for promoting grooming. I'm speaking not only for myself but for a multitude. It has been two months of cowardliness with leadership hoping this will all blow away. It won't. Coeur d'Alene and Cootney County Soft on Child Crime Campaign is about to begin. The prosecuting attorney has a responsibility for filing felony charges against this event that occurred. You as elected officials have a responsibility to the community to protect us as a whole and especially our children. And I'm pleading with you not to ignore this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do you want me to turn it off for leaving off to the next?
No, 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 you can leave it on. Anyone else?
I'll go.
Okay, let's keep it to five minutes. How's that?
Okay, well, I'll give my comment if I don't know.
I can, I can time you.
Well, let me know at 4:00.
Okay, fair enough. You bet.
I, I try to be respectful of your time. I know we could be here forever. My name is Heather and.
Your last name, please, Heather?
Green. I was at the Panhandle Patriots event that took place at the same time at the Pride in the Park event. When I went to that event, I had a sign. And my sign said, "Wanted to be wanted," and the second wanted was in rainbow colors, "but then Jesus in red wanted me." And I had a cross in there with blood dripping. On the back, it said, "Now, now married to a man who loves me like Christ." That sign was indicative of something that God delivered me from, which was a same-sex bisexual attraction. What I'm about to say is going to be controversial, so I ask for your respect as I share and exercise my First Amendment rights. The LGBTQ lifestyle is very dangerous. My best friend lived with another woman for six years. She was free from that lifestyle for a very long time, yet she still died of heart failure at the age of 34. Statistically, that lifestyle puts you at a higher risk for heart failure, heart disease, congestive heart failure, coronary artery disease, and arrhythmias. Her brother died of AIDS. Now, he was also delivered from that attraction. An unfortunate thing was when he was delivered, he was on his deathbed. So he died at 36. The lifestyle itself is a very, very dangerous lifestyle. And this is not about gay rights, but this is about the right that children have to be protected from it. There are studies that have been done that show that it's nine out of 10 kids who struggle with questioning their gender, they've been exposed to it in social norms. It's called social contagion. So if you can only imagine if you have a drag queen person on the stage in provocative attire, rubbing his genitals, doing things like that, that is going to affect the children. Some of the other statistics that people are not aware of is that the rate of cancer is much higher. There's a higher rate of rectal cancer, anal cancer, prostate cancer, and there's actually a higher rate of breast cancer amongst women. There's also an increased risk of pancreatic cancer. And with sex changes. And with sex changes, there's a lot of problems that take place. Um, female to male genital reconstruction surgery has a seventy percent complication rate. Um, making an artificial penis has a forty-eight percent, uh, rate of late complications, including erectile dysfunction, uh, cordy, fistula, uh, wound tightness, scrotal numbness, urine spraying. And, um, if you want to know what fistula is, it's an abnormal opening or, uh, organs not connecting and abnormal openings in organs. So as you can imagine, that would have a lot of infections and things. They have a much higher rate of osteoporosis. Um, they have, um, women have a lot, uh, lower mineral density when they take these hormone therapy things. Infertility is a problem, um, the inability to orgasm. Um, chest binding causes lung issues amongst many other things. Vaginal atrophy, which makes sex painful and means that your vagina is deteriorating and the muscles are no longer holding. Um, and the orgasm thing is thirty percent of male-to-female surgeries. They lose their ability to orgasm, uh, which if we could all be honest here, that's one of the few joys we have in life is our sexual ability as well, as well as eating. So, the thing is, is that, um, there is the, the, the need to uphold the law, yes. But there is also a need to protect children. And when I went to that event, I did not carry that sign because I'm bold and courageous and I just don't care what people think. I very much have fear of man. I'm very afraid of what people think about me and what they'll do to me. But I carried that sign because I know it's what is right because introducing kids to this stuff is going to influence them. And it's going to increase the likelihood that they are going to step into a confusion and a lifestyle that is actually seriously going to harm them. Um, one of the things that I did not include is the suicide rate. They have a forty percent higher suicide rate. Now, that is not attempted, that is killing themselves. After you get a sex change, that suicide rate increases by twenty percent. So that is a sixty-one percent. There is a study that has shown that eighty-three percent of people who identify as transgender have, struggle with suicidal thoughts. They think of killing themselves. So, my thing is when it comes to smoking, any sane adult knows that smoking is not good. Maybe we smoke, but we're not going to go out and encourage everybody else to smoke because we know there's dangers with that lifestyle.
You've got another minute, we're going to six minutes, but go ahead.
Sure, no problem, thank you, thank you, sir. So the thing is, is with this, why are we encouraging kids to do this? So what I am appealing to you is to your conscience. I watched the video of this man dancing. I thought it was very clear he had his scrotum hanging out on both sides. My eyes work just fine, I'm very young, I don't have any vision problems. But there are other things where you're smacking your butt and you're doing stuff like this. And we have an opportunity here to protect the kids. This is nothing against LGBTQ. I obviously have a passion for them and I love them because I know so many people who lived in that lifestyle. But where the line needs to be drawn is not their rights, but the rights of children to be protected and the need for a community to protect children. So I'm appealing to your conscience to say, please prosecute and do what is right. And honestly, the people who approved, um, this event and North Idaho Pride Alliance, they should be, Pride Alliance, they should be held to a higher standard. It's not even these dancers, they just came in and did what they were there to do. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Thanks, Heather. Anyone else? Name, please.
Uh, my name is Rochelle and I'm a homemaker, so I can be here. I know there was a lot more people who wanted...
Your last, your last name, please, Michelle?
Uh, no, it's okay, just, first name's good. Um, anyway, so there was a lot more people who wanted to be here, but they can't because they, they work, they don't have the luxury that I do. Um, this is also regarding the sex show in the park. Um, is this who we are as a county? Adults who are okay with sexualizing, demoralizing, destabilizing and derailing the normal sexual and psychological development of, of vulnerable children? They called it family-friendly to lure in minors and make naive parents think it was okay for kids to be there. In what alternate reality is men prancing on stage dressed like women prostitutes family-friendly? This was an erotica show in a public park. Everything about the drag dance was sexually suggestive. It was revolting and humiliating to view it as an adult. What are we doing to our children? Even if some couldn't decipher the exposed genitalia, I don't think anyone can, uh, can deny he was rubbing his genitals right in front of underage girls. This is illegal and we should be prosecuted, as should the others for the sex show. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, please?
Hi, I'm William Lee. Um, so I just want to, just echo what was said here. Um, a lot of the points that were touched on, um, already that I was going to talk about. Um, I know that a lot of people don't really go to downtown Coeur d'Alene sometimes. You know, you guys live in like more sane places like Hayden and Post Falls and stuff like that. I live in Coeur d'Alene, uh, and I was there. But, you know, what Linda had said actually happened. You have guys who identify as women dressing up in drag, uh, doing, um, you know, burlesque dancing in lingerie, like fishnet stockings and thongs, uh, men with, um, you know, um, breast implants. Yeah, just, um, really like, uh, like the worst that you can see. You know, short of just outright nudity. And so, I, I just, uh, I think that, you know, it is very difficult. I think political correctness is such a strong force. Um, but if we look at, Cooten, we're somewhat fortunate because there's a lot of conservative people here. But if you look around the nation in other cities, metro areas, um, like in Dallas, you know, there was, um, a, um, a drag dance where kids were invited and kids were encouraged to give, uh, one-dollar bills to these, um, drag dancers. You have in Seattle where there was a pride parade, where it was, uh, just a naked dude, naked, uh, naked dude wearing a Bugs Bunny mask to, I guess to conceal his identity. But he was completely naked, um, yeah, in his birthday suit. And just a bunch of naked guys wearing leather and, um, stuff like that, dancing in front of kids, um, and just pretty much any metro area where you go to, you'll see this. That's, and that's what, you know, my concern is, is that this political correctness, it's, you know, it's, it's destroying us because we're afraid to do something, because we're afraid of being labeled as a certain thing, you know, as homophobic or whatever, that we don't, we can't muster up the, um, the gumption to, to do something about it. So I, I just want to, you know, I was going to, going to ask the county prosecutor, I know he's going to be leaving in a, in a month or so, um, but really to address his office, um, as someone who's serving as the Cooten County prosecuting attorney for the county, um, to represent the county because I do think this is an issue. Um, and also to the county commissioners, uh, I know you guys will be appointed to fill his seat. So I would ask you guys to find someone that has, you know, that would, um, you know, bury these things in mind, um, for the constituency of Cooten County.
Anyone else, please?
I just have a question.
Tina?
Isn't that hard and fast rule that one has to give once last name?
It's not a public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not a hard and fast rule. I suppose I could make a decision not to take, not to record it, but I don't want to do that in a group of this size.
Just checking for my information.
Sylvia?
And, um, the citizens are going to be, um, I wanted to introduce our new HR generalist, Zach Newkirk.
Push it up, please.
Oh, sorry.
Um, I'd like to introduce Zach Newkirk, who is our HR generalist. Um, he started in August first and he's going to be doing recruiting for the county. So I did want to introduce him to the team. Welcome.
Welcome, Zach, good to have you here. Okay, yes, sir. You want to speak, go right ahead.
I could. Uh, good morning, my name's John Padula.
Can you spell your last name, please?
P-A-D-U-L-A. I've been a resident of Cooten County for forty-three years and I, I love my community. Uh, I have a checkered past. I just came to know Jesus as my Lord and Savior fourteen years ago. Before that, I was a drug addict, pervert, liar, thief. I mean, everything in opposition to what I believe our community should be doing today. Uh, but when I found God fourteen years ago, he gave me a heart to do the right thing and he changed everything about me. And now, being somebody who loves our community instead of takes from our community, uh, I have seen the destructive nature of sin in Cooten County. And it's not getting better, it's getting worse. Uh, we are a literal modern-day Sodom and Gomorrah as a nation and it's happening faster than we can get ahead of. Uh, the sexualizing of children is damaging children for their whole life. It's not just a, something that may not be good or, or bad for their current state. Uh, we are literally destroying the future for our children by allowing this to take place in our county. If five years ago a heterosexual woman would have been dancing erotically and pervertedly in front of children in public, she would have been arrested on felonies. And now because of the way that our culture's going, uh, we have kind of put law aside and we want to cater to people who are harming our children and harming their own children. Uh, our sexual preference has always been something that is intimate and private and the privacy of our own home and our own bedrooms. And that's how it still should be, especially around children and in a public setting. I don't know why our county and our city is allowing these things to happen, but it's immoral, it's wrong, it's destructive and it needs to stop. And people who are committing crimes, it doesn't matter what the crimes are, they need to be prosecuted. And this, at the very minimum, was lewd and lascivious, if not worse. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Come right up.
My name is Jason Dines. Do you mind if I? So I would just encourage our prosecutor to, we, we've already had the law read to us, what, uh, what are Idaho constitution or Idaho law states. So I would ask our prosecuting attorney to just watch the videos. They're all over online, um, they're not hard to, to find. And, and, and just see that this is in fact what happened, you know? Like John said, uh, at the very least, lewd and lascivious conduct, uh, to children under the age of eighteen. And we need to stand as a community. I, you gotta be twenty-one to go to state line, um, to view this kind of stuff. And we pretty much have that same thing going on in public downtown. I just want to encourage you guys to look at that and, 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 um, and, and, and hold the law. You know, it's not hard to watch a video of a man's genitalia hanging out in front of children to see that the law was broken. And, and please prosecute. Um, if that was me, I would be prosecuted, you know? If that was you, that'd be prosecuted. If those were your children, you'd want it prosecuted. And so, I would just ask our prosecutor to look at the evidence and do what's right. And, and not, and I'm not homophobic or transgender, I, I don't stand for it, but I don't, and I don't believe in, that's my lifestyle. But I, you know, I want my rights as a Christian in the, in the United States of America, so they should give them rights too. And if he's not going to prosecute, we need to draw a line, like what is acceptable, what's not acceptable. We, we need to come to that conclusion as a community and say, if this is what's going to happen, you're breaking the law. If you keep it to this degree, then we, then, then you're not breaking the law. You know, there's a couple of issues here. If they're not going to prosecute, then we need to come to an agreement, what is acceptable in our community and what is not, you know? Because if that's acceptable, we need to review it and, and we need to have debate about it. If, if that's considered not to be lewd and lascivious conduct, then I think we need to debate that because I believe that it is. And I believe a lot of my constituents, my friends, my church, I, hundreds of people believe that that is. So let's debate that and come to an agreement of what standard we're going to allow in our city parks, you know? Are we going to allow that or are we not going to allow that, you know? I think it's a debatable subject. I think a lot of people would have a lot of, uh, insight on that, to what's acceptable and what's not. And so, if we're not going to prosecute, let's talk about it and let's, let's draw a line in the sand and say, this is what is acceptable, you know? I, 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 those are people in our community, they got just as much rights as I have in, in my community. But I think there needs to be a line drawn, that's what's acceptable in our community and what's not. And, and come to an agreement with the prosecutors, with the community, with our elected officials, with the, with the people of our community. So, um, if we don't come to a conclusion today, let's, let's talk about this, debate about it, let's have further hearings on it and, and decide what really needs to happen because I, I believe that the law was probably broken in multiple ways. And if they're not going to prosecute, let's, let's draw the line and get to where everybody is in agreement with what the law should, what the law is. So, that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay then.
There's someone on the telephone who'd like to speak.
Yeah. Yeah, go right ahead, please, your name?
Um, good morning, my name is Alicia Abbott and I work for a statewide organization called Idaho Ninety-Seven Project. And I'm calling in this morning because I'm deeply concerned about the homophobic supremacist comments that are coming into this meeting this morning. I would like to urge the Cooten County Commissioners to update their education on Christian nationalism and how it's affecting Idaho specifically in the Panhandle. Um, you know, I was a volunteer at CDA Pride in the Park and we were surrounded all day with people carrying semi-automatic weapons and hateful verbiage and unkind words. And this hate that is being driven towards our LGBTQIA+ neighbors is very erroneous and harmful to our communities for so many reasons. Um, mainly that being gay, lesbian, trans, et cetera, is not a personal choice. And, uh, the dictates of specific religions should not deny the existence of our neighbors and/or what they choose to do to celebrate, um, their lifestyle. Um, so please, um, I encourage you to make a public statement against all of the homophobic comments that were given today. And I really, really encourage the people delivering them, um, to be on alert as this is not welcome in our community. Um, creating policy and local, uh, ordinance that would hamstring the rights of our LGBTQIA+ neighbors also opens up the community to lawsuits at great cost. So, um, please disregard all of these homophobic supremacist comments you heard today. Um, they are not welcome and, um, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Alicia. Anyone else on the phone who wishes to speak? Okay, so hearing none, I have, uh, nine forty-eight, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.